All right, it's six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Christian County Library Board of Trustees meeting. If anybody needs tonight's agenda, they can be found over by outside in the little entryway. That's the view. Thank you. Okay, are there any items that we need to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
I do not have any.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I will mention that the, in the table, financial reports. So Mary would have done the quarterly year-to-date summary, but since it was a monthly, we went ahead and did it to October.
Okay.
So just so you know that that's farther in the year than you would've got.
The bigger quarter. Okay. Okay, um, so as, are, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Uh, second. All right. I need...
Yep, no one's gonna object because you both said no.
Good. All right, so there are no objections. These items are adopted. Okay, administrative highlights, Friends of the Library.
Yes, I've asked Dave, the former, now president of the Friends of the Library, to come and kind of give an update about their activities. So if you mind coming to that podium.
Sure.
Thank you.
This is too long, you can cut me off. If you don't know me, I'm Chris, I'm Dave Carmichael, and I'm the current president of Christian County Friends of the Library. I'm gonna give a little background about myself and my journey that got me here, and then I'll get right into it. So after retiring in the spring of 2017, I began searching for a way to give back to my community. Since my mother has received years of benefits from the outreach services at her local library, I decided to volunteer. This was totally unrelated to my work experience. So I volunteered for the Christian County Outreach. It was a real learning experience, and I did that from 2017 until 2020, when COVID hit. I also joined FOL in the fall of 2019. After COVID, I was elected FOL president for the 2021 to 2023 term. There have been a lot of challenges and changes, but I had a lot of help. But I feel the Friends of the Library is on solid ground. My history is only a brief moment in the history of this organization. Christian County Friends of the Library first met in September of 1980 and formed a committee to raise funds to promote additional materials and services not covered in the library's budget. In 1982, the official bylaws were written, making this organization one of the oldest of its kind in southwest Missouri. There have been amendments over the years to the bylaws, but one thing has never changed, and that's the mission of our Friends of the Library organization. And I quote, "The purpose of this organization shall be to bind together all citizens and groups of citizens in Christian County interested in the development of the library, to receive and administer funds donated for these purposes, to help develop public awareness of library services, and to assist with special programs and events." Moving forward in time, this community branch opened in May of 2018 with Ozark's remodeling and reopening in August of that same year. FOL was in full swing, recording over $8,000 from book sales, plus the cart sales we do. And 2019 was a banner year for fundraising, with the two branches raising over $10,000 from book sales, plus the additional cart sales. Then COVID hit hard in 2020, with lockdowns and no book sales, fundraising stopped, except for the fact we received over $2,000 from thrift books from previous shipments. So in 2021, we started with low membership, two new branches, and tentative plans to have book sales again. It was not until that year that restrictions were lifted in the summer. So the library staff decided to put on a spring pop-up sale at three branches, raising over $1,000. Book sales for the remainder of 2021 garnered over $4,500. Additionally, the library updated our FOL, um, what's attached to your website, what do you call it? The FOL page, I'm sorry, to help us communicate better with our community. In 2021, wasn't just about raising money for the library, but how to administer our donations to the library. So a grant application was developed for the library to use when requesting funds for a project or a program. I felt this would keep both parties accountable and transparent, particularly with items approved only by the board and not by the general membership. Our first application was the gravestone cleaning application, which amounted to $450. Then the youth services taken makes, which was additional $450. The new child's, uh, children's shelving area here in NIXA was approved by the general membership, and it amounted to $4,960 that we funded. I can't leave 2021 without mentioning the passing of our dear treasurer, Maureen Myers, in March of that year. A special book case was made in her honor through special donations and library funds, and this is on display at Ozark. And I thought it turned out really well. Thankfully, Julia Taylor took the helm when Maureen could no longer function as treasurer of our organization. In 2022, we were back to full swing, grossing over $8,700 in book sales, plus the cart sales, at all four branches, and membership was beginning to grow again. We celebrated the FOL 40th anniversary with a membership drive and lots and lots of cookies. Grants were approved for three new library road signs amounting to $1,870, and the outdoor concert series support of $500. We also continued to support the library card drive that we've done, I don't know, since I've been president, and the staff milestone gift cards as well, that we also furnish to the staff when they hit a five, 10, 15, 20-year time. This year, 2023, we decided to try some new things. Moving the spring book sale to the Finley River Park was a success and was supported well by the community. We raised over $5,000, but we couldn't have done it without the library's relationship with the Ozark's part department. We tried community events at both Sparta and Clever with limited success, and a brief book sale here at NIXA, still raising a total of over $8,600, plus consistent cart sales in this year. In addition, we participated in Ozark's first volunteer fair in July, which I think was a great idea for community involvement. One thing that grew exponentially in 2023 was our financial support for the library. In the spring of this year, our FOL account was growing, and the library was unsure they would receive state funding. So we requested that they give us a list of funding opportunities focusing on kids and family programs and supplies, knowing that some programs would be cut or scaled back. At the spring general meeting this past March, Nicholas Holliday presented the grant proposal as a funding package of $17,000. After the motion was approved, a second motion to amend the amount to $20,000, this motion was carried and approved by all. It was clear the FOL membership was not going to allow state politics to deprive our local library system of our kids and family programs and events. As it turned out, the state finally gave out the library funding so that all could be fully funded. Next year looks bright for the Christian County Friends of the Library and our county library. I will be stepping down as president, phew, at the end of this year, but our newly elected president Lonnie Brandon and vice president Leila Harden will be filling my vacancy and that of Brian Cox quite well. In fact, I have no doubt that with the experience already on the FOL board, they will take it to the next level. Also, a special thanks to Renee and Nicholas for all their help over the past three years. I couldn't have done it without them. I count them as true friends of the library. It is my hope in the future that Christian County will turn its focus on the many good things that our local library does for our community, and not the negative things that society has brought upon us. Thank you for your time, and I know I've missed some things trying to cover the last three or four years. Does the board have any questions for me? Anything at all?
I have one question.
Sure.
But just truly thank you for your service to the community, and we're so appreciative for the Friends of the Library and your support of our library. I don't, I admit, I don't know much about the cart sales, so could you provide me with some more information about the cart sales?
Are you talking about the gift card for the employees, or you're talking about the card drive?
Yes.
I think next month Outreach will be here, is that right, at the next meeting?
Yeah.
And that could probably be explained better than I.
Right, great timing.
Yeah, so, so...
You mentioned the cart sales also, is that what you were asking about? Perhaps. I just, I knew about the, the, the book sales, and I'm so happy to hear how well they're doing, but I wasn't familiar with other sales that were going on.
Okay, the cart sale, if you go out here and in any branch, there's a cart that we have used books on.
Okay.
And...
I had not connected those with Friends of the Library.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a lot, but if you add it up at the end of the year, it's quite a bit.
Sure.
It's actually surprising. So we have a lot of people that buy off of the carts, particularly at NIXA and Ozark. The other branches as well, you know, register some, some cart sales, and we, and the money's brought to the front desk, employees are, uh, take it and so forth, and then hold it for us to come and pick it up. So we have that.
Great, okay. Thank you.
I have, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff here, so I don't see how it would be confusing. Anything?
Uh, no, my only question is more of like a public knowledge type of thing. For the, um, the Friends of the Library book sales?
Mm-hmm.
You collect books year-round, right? They just need to bring them to their local branch, and you guys store, I know that when we got the annex, that the first thing was where are we going to put the books, right?
Right.
So there's a spot back here for all of the books, so...
Yeah, if, if, we take donations, just like Springfield Cream does, but it's on a lot smaller scale, obviously. They've got, what is it, nine branches and warehouses and all that. So then we're pretty much relying on volunteers to do this. And so we get these books, we look at mold condition is the first thing we look at, you know, mold and bugs and stains, and those get recycled, because people don't want to buy those. And then the next thing is to categorize it, look at it, see is it fiction, is it nonfiction? You know, if it's kids' books, what, that part probably fails me the most, but you know, what, you know, as a young adult, is it, is it grade school, that sort of thing? We don't really get into the content of the book, the condition of the book is the main thing, but I will tell you over the last, ever since I've been doing this, we've not had one complaint about what we sell in the book sales.
I know it's always a very popular question on the local Facebook pages, where can I donate books?
Yeah, where can I donate books? So I want to make sure some people know.
Any branch.
Any branch, anytime, as long as our doors are open, you guys will take them.
Yeah, and I will tell you, having said that, that we will not be taking donations at Ozark in December, as we are moving out of our current space there in the...
Netzer Room.
Netzer Room, and going to a little more compact area, but the library needs that space, just like we, we were sorting in this room behind you.
Yes.
You know, now we have many times the space, so a lot more sorting will come on at NIXA. Ozark will, their sorting space will be reduced, but we'll handle it, so...
Well, thank you for all of the work that you guys put into that. It's not as simple as, you know, putting the books out, so it's, it's a lot of work. So thank you for all that you guys have done for that.
I don't know if I should do this, but Lonnie, would you stand up? And Leila, these will be our president and vice president for, for 2024. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All business, our implement weather procedure review. This is just kind of a reminder, since it's the most wonderful time of the year, that weather closing stuff is kind of those last-minute decisions that we try not to close the library just for the, you know, the fun of it. So typically, like, we follow kind of a procedure. If school's in session, if it's a weekday when school would normally be in session, we kind of take our cues from the school. If they close for the day, then we automatically delay opening until noon. Whether or not we decide to open at noon, that buys us a little bit of time to figure that out, and I'm usually staying in touch with, I'm watching what the schools are doing. I get alerts from the emergency management department from Christian County. I'm watching all of the emergency services, Facebook pages and stuff, so when they're saying, please don't get out on the roads, like, it's just gonna cause problems for us, then that gives me the clue that maybe we should not be open. So usually what will happen is I'll make that call, notify staff, we'll put it out on all of our channels, social media, our website, and everything like that. And then I usually send an email to the trustees to just let you know, hey, we're, we're closed today, so you know what's happening, but it's not one of those that I can, like, call you up and check and see if it's okay to close. I have to make that decision kind of in the spur of the moment. So if you ever have questions about, you know, reasons behind it or anything, please let me know, but just wanted to kind of review that since, hopefully, we won't have lots of closings. Like, I like Sunday snows, since I don't have to worry about it.
The woolly worms have been very... Yeah, the woolly worms have been very big for a very long time, okay, so, not really. I don't have faith, but I do appreciate everything you do to make sure that the staff is safe, the patrons are safe, and taking all of that into consideration. I know it's not an easy decision. There were a few last year, like, doody-dum, doody-dum. So you, I know that a lot of time goes into that thought process. Okay, um, new business, the 2024 budget.
Okay, this is a lot, so let me just take this one step at a time. So the first, you've got the pay scales, that's part, so you will vote on it as a, like, complete package, the pay scale and budget, because they go hand-in-hand together. But I gave you a copy of the 2023 pay scale and then the proposed 2024 pay scale, so there are not a lot of changes, but let me talk through a couple. For all of the non-admin categories, so that's clerks assistants, associate specialists, and associate admin, those are all bumping up, we're bumping up the starting pay range, because the minimum wage will increase to 1230 January 1st. So our clerks make that in that lowest range, so everyone's bumped up a percentage between two and a half to three and a half percentage in between what it was for 2023 and 2024. So that's, if we hire a new person in any of these categories, typically, that's where they start at, unless they have significant experience or education above what's required. The, the admin categories, I did not shift that up. There's a big kind of gap between the non-admin and the admin, and all of our admin have, except for, like, one, have been here for a while anyways, so they're not at the starting range, so it doesn't kind of really impact them at all. So there's no changes to those categories as far as starting range. There are a couple of changes to staff classifications that I just want to let you know about. The business office assistant have reclassified into the associate category because of the level of responsibility and experience and expertise required for that position. It needed to be classified a little bit higher. And then we removed, from the specialist category, we had a floating library assistant, which is not a position that we have anymore. It was a full-time person, I've been here a while. Her duties have changed, and she's not, she doesn't float around to the branches anymore. And then we added, early this year, we added substitute assistants that are part-time, so those are just classified as library assistants, and those are kind of on-call staff that fill in as needed and don't have a set amount of hours that they're expected to receive. And then the, last year, we had a IT help desk coordinator, and they left, and what we really feel like we need is more of a support, overall support specialist. So that is a change, that I took that help desk coordinator out of the associate admin category. And then the bigger one that I want to let you know about is the director of IT and facilities. So we've had an IT manager, we've had a couple different people in this role over the last five years or so, but our current IT manager has a strong enough skill set and experience to be classified at a higher admin rate, and he also has a good skill set for facilities, which is something that we need. And so I've talked with him, and he is comfortable with it too, so I'm gonna move him to the admin three category, and he'll be taking some of that off of my plate as far as coordinating the facilities management and that having, we're in the process of hiring the IT support specialist that will take some of the day-to-day basic IT maintenance off of his plate, so it will hopefully free up enough time for him to do that. He's already been doing that, he's taken the initiative with the move and everything. He, he was hired right as we were transitioning over here, and he just jumped in and figured stuff out, and when there was a leak, he called the roofer, because I wasn't here, you know, it was, it's just something that is sort of a natural inclination for him anyway, so that does come with a bump in pay, which I think is appropriate for his responsibilities. He also really has a good, um, big-picture view of library, like, not just the day-to-day making the computers and software work, but like, what strategically should we be doing with technology to serve our patrons and staff? So it's been a real, a real great addition to our staff here, so... Those are the proposed changes to the pay and the reclassifications. So now let's talk, are there any questions about that specifically? So I gave you the kind of two different versions of the budget, but two different layouts. So there's one that adjusts the 2024 budget by itself, that, and then there's one with the comparison to 2023 and 2023 projections. So what you'll be voting to adopt or not is the budget, that's the document we need. But to talk through everything, I wanted to give you the 2023 budget and projections. So it's not wildly different from the preliminary that I showed you last month. I'll talk through the revenue a little bit, and then the, the detail of the expenditures, we didn't have last month, so I'll talk through those. So for revenue, the carryover slash bond reimbursement is the amount that we're using from sources other than our regular revenue sources. About $300,000 is from the 2020 certificate of participation, which will basically pay for itself. It was unused money that will help make that annual payment on it, which is what helped us to purchase the NIXA building. About $60,000 of that is money that was received from the Fremont land purchase, sale, and then I put in about $68,000 to get us to a balanced budget. I'm hoping that we don't actually need that, but I was hoping it would be zero from that, but I needed just a little bit to feel comfortable. It's easier to put it in and not need it than to need it and then have to go through the amendment and everything, but as far as, like, the other estimates for state aid for the, through the state, I, they run on a, we get payments in fall and spring, so we won't know what we'll get next fall, so I estimate zero, just to be on the safe side. So if it's similar to what we got this year, that will be about $65,000, so that will be enough to cover that kind of padding amount, so that we won't need that. So estimated tax revenue, about 3.3, which is the same as what I presented last month. Estimated grants, I've put in about $80,000, and then there's some expenditures, expenditures that we won't spend if we don't get that amount of, of grants in, so there's some tied there. Fines and fees, I've estimated low, so that gives us some local room if we want to make some changes to how our, our fines are, and I would bring that to you if we make some major changes to the fine structure. I also added in a little bit into that fee category for the Missouri State Highway Patrol rent, that'll go into that category. It's not a huge amount, but it is a little something, so I put it in there. And then our estimated interest, I just put what we projected for this year, so I'm not sure how much that will go up or down. Any questions about the revenue? So for, I don't have any plans for capital expenses, so knock on wood, we don't need a roof or anything like that. If we, if something like that does come up, we'll have to look at using money from our reserve. For personnel, this is very similar to last year. For the salaries, it's about a 4% increase, which is about the average increase across the board, so I'll talk through wage increases. The, the staff that are at the starting range of their pay scale will be bumped up because of the, the minimum wage bumps up, bump ups, and then if, so all non-admin staff will get some percentage, about 2% to 3% increase regardless.
Beyond performance.
Yeah, so performance, with a satisfactory performance review, there's an additional increase if you've been here for at least a year, that's when you kind of qualify for that. And then I've built in for, for most categories of staff, the non-admin ones, the, like, at the five-year mark, an additional bump up to kind of help acknowledge years of service. We haven't really had that structure before, so it's hard to build it in all at once, so I'm trying to kind of do it a little bit at a time, so those five-year employees will get a bump above the two-to-four-year employees. And then, so most, most of the staff will get between a 3% and 5% increase. There are a few that, their job duties have changed a little bit, so there's a couple additional increases in there, but that's overall what we're looking at. Most of the admin will get at least a 3% increase with a good satisfactory performance review. FICA's just a formula, .0765. Missouri Loggers amount is a formula, the full-time staff, that's the state pension, essentially, we pay into, and that's about a 14% of their salary that we pay into. And then I budgeted an 8% increase for health insurance, hopefully that will be enough. Last year, that was about what it was, I think, and that was a bigger bump than we'd gotten before, so...
Have you gotten a quote yet for 2024?
No, we do insurance renewal in May, so we'll get that quote in, like, March, so it's hard to budget for that, so...
We did see a pretty decent bump this last, so...
Yes, yeah, I'm hoping it won't be as low.
Okay, so you just kind of budgeted, but it would stay the same?
Yes, yeah, so, and we do have some flexibility. We're at the highest tier of benefits with the plan that we use, so we do have, in worst-case scenario, we have the flexibility to, like, increase a deductible. So we do have, in worst-case scenario, we have the flexibility to like increase a deductible or co-pays or something if it comes in astronomical quote. And that's something that I do bring to the board when we're making those decisions about which plans and then what, what percentage the employees pay and stuff.
Who's the current carrier?
We have Anthem, it's through the Chamber plans because we're small enough to qualify for using their plans. Payroll expenses, I mentioned this in my director's report, these are actually, I'm budgeting a little bit less because the software they're, we're changing to Bamboo HR is less expensive. That wasn't really our goal in changing, but it was delightful. It's just designed more for, I think, organizations our size. I think paychecks is more than we really needed and it doesn't actually function as well as we need it.
They use Bamboo HR and they love.
Really?
That's good to know.
There's a lot of good things on there that make it easy hiring to all of the.
That's great. I've talked to at least four or five other libraries like our size that have nothing but good to say about it, so I was really pleased about that. Okay, so that's personnel. Collection is pretty similar to last year. The biggest change is I put extra in electronic collections. You can see we're projected to be a little bit over budget in that category this year. And that's where we did institute the monthly spending cap on Hoopla that will help us keep that under control, even though it does limit the resources there. But we're hoping to put a little bit more money into our overdrive collections to offset when we do have those limits in Hoopla. I did add, every year, we, Mary and I sit down and work through how we categorize everything and we find changes that we need to make to better reflect like what category things go into. So we did a few big things this year and so you'll see in the hotspots consortium, those two categories weren't in the collection category before, but hotspots are the hotspots that we lend to patrons. So that's the service fees for that annually. So that is a collection item. So we re-categorized it into that, even though it's kind of its own unique animal. And the consortia was a portion of the automation category that was under operating expenses. And so for this, that's like our Mobius membership fees and courier and our payments to Springfield Green for software and services for our library software. So that, that helps drive the collection and make it available. So we felt it was more appropriate in this category. So that's why there's a big variance between the budget last year and the budget this year. It's just a re-categorization of one of those things. Any questions about that so far? Okay. Last is the operating expenses. So I left in this comparison, the automation category, but in the actual budget, that category's not even listed there because it won't exist next year. So, but that is spread out now between collection, IT, professional services, and marketing. So there was just a hodgepodge of stuff in that category.
You just took it out and reallocated those things to other categories?
Yes, yes, yes. So we're not just not spending the $100,000 this year, we're just spending it in different categories. The major change, bond fees, buildings and grounds, development, those are all pretty similar. Information technology, that line item is significantly higher than budgeted last year because it took on some of the things from the automation category.
Question for buildings and grounds.
Oh, yes.
Did we anticipate last year, can you remind me when we were doing the budget, that there would be increased in buildings and grounds for the purchase of Nixa?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
As you'll recall, we amended the budget after the purchase.
That's right, we did.
And we added in, so.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that, okay.
Yep.
Is that category basically maintenance?
Yes, it's repairs, it's also our like janitorial services and our.
Snow removal.
Services. So if we have a bad winter, then that category gets worth spending. So anything that is maintaining the facilities, yeah. Oh, IT, some of this, I would say about $40,000 to $50,000 of that category is dependent upon grants. So if we don't get, you know, that $80,000 that I budgeted in revenue, then we won't be spending quite this much in IT. But we have to budget to bring it in, in order to budget to send it out. If we got, we could get a grant that was unexpected of like $100,000, that would be amazing. That been, that, we still have to spend it out of this category, so we could end up like spending $250,000, but then we'd have more money in revenue than we expected. But we try to plan, we try to plan for that income and outcome and just say, we're not spending this until we know we'll get the revenue for it. It also has, we added a new segment within the IT category. All of these have kind of like very granular line items within them that we use internally. But we added a IT services one that for our printing services, for all of our public and staff printers, we pay a company where we buy the machines, but then we pay them like a per-page amount and that covers the ink and the maintenance of those machines.
Like a service contract?
Yeah, it's a service contract, but it also includes the ink, so. Those were categorized in the professional services, but we're trying to, I'll talk about that in a minute, about making that better reflective of what those are. Those are really IT services, so we just re-categorize them. So that's about $15,000 or so that goes into the IT budget. So that's part of that increase over last year's. Insurance, our property auto and liability jumped quite a bit this year. So we get the bills, like they're due by January 1st, so it's one of those things that it sometimes hits the budget the year before and sometimes the year after. It depends sometimes on when we get the bills. We don't always get them in great timing. So the, the amount that's in here, the $46,000 is what we're expecting to pay for in 2024 for 2025 coverage. So what we're projected, forty, the $44,000 is much higher. We'll be paying that by the end of this year and we've been projecting $34,000. So it's much higher than we were expecting. So there was, I don't know why the jumps, I think it's just industry.
That's what I've been seeing in, in my own insurance.
Exactly.
My clients' insurance too.
Yeah, we haven't had any like significant claims that would change that. So I don't like, it's just industry, so.
Everything costs you.
Yes, yeah. Marketing is increased because this was one of those weird outliers that was in the automation category. There was some software that was $6,000 that's used for marketing, what Nicholas had talked about last month, the Orange Boy, that Savannah software that, so we're just categorizing that out of that since that department is the one that uses it and administers it for that purpose. Memberships, that includes Chamber of Commerce memberships, that includes the Christian County membership, that includes professional memberships that we typically pay. If someone's going to a conference, we'll pay the membership to get the discounted rate on the conference attendance. This will come up in the training and travel budget, but 2024 is the year for the Public Library Association conference. It happens every other year, so we try to get some staff to that and that's a more expensive conference. So I'm hoping to send six or seven staff to that, we'll see. It'll depend, it's kind of drivable, it's in Columbus this year, so it's like, it's like 10 hours, I'm like, I can drive it, but not everybody's up for 10-hour drive. So there may be a combination of us driving and. That'll impact the travel and the training budget a little bit too. Movie licenses is one that we, I'm putting it into the programming budget because it was its own weird line item, but it's used for the, it's a public performance license for when we have movies for events. So that falls squarely within programming costs. Postage, there's a bit of a decrease there. We had a leased machine at every branch and we don't need them at all the branches. So we were able to, there were, there was like a five-year lease on some of them, but two of them, the leases ended, so we moved, we moved postage machines around anyways. Now we have two. So there's less cost in there for that. And there was postage already that had been kind of put into the machines, so we've basically prepaid some of our postage for next year. So that's why that's a significant decrease. We don't expect to be mailing less than usual next year, it's just those changes. Then the professional services is one, there's a significant decrease there and that's just because reclassification of things. We'd had a hodgepodge in there, so we've defined it more like these are professionals services. So like our audit, our attorney, security, and our collection agency, those are all in there. And then the others have been moved to there, to IT or the consortia or wherever else. I'm trying to remember what, I think mostly IT is what was moved out of there. Programming and programming supplies, I've reduced a little bit this year. We've, we're projected to come in under budget this year. We've done a better job of like streamlining some of our supply purchases and getting more donation of services. But this will be one area that, it's, it's one of the few areas we can cut if we have to. So I'm hoping that this will still give us a good robust set of programs and good supplies. But that's also something we can get, you know, grants and stuff sometimes for the office. Staff and board travel, we are way under for this year, but I think next year we'll still need that amount for, for travel, for professional development. Plus that, that includes mileage. We have one remote staff that does travel in once a week or so that we have to pay mileage for, so that's included in there, that's a good chunk. Supplies are, I've budgeted for about what we've projected to spend this year. That was one of those categories we increased when we amended the budget last year, knowing we would need some odds and ends for the additional space. But we've done really well on spending there this year. That's one of those areas that we always are looking for to streamline and improve how we're purchasing. And I think, all right, utilities, we're doing good this year. That was another one that we weren't sure what to project for the additional space. But we've done well this year, but you know, one, one bad winter, one bad summer and that can skew all that. So I still try to budget generously for that one.
And we worked in this side of the building for the entire year. So it is an increase over where we're projected to end, but ultimately a decrease over last year's.
Correct, correct, correct. And then vehicles is similar to last year. We'll be over budget on that this year, but we did have a $4,000 transmission that we have to buy. So I'm hoping that won't happen again this year. Any questions? I know that's a lot, but hopefully I answered questions that you might have had beforehand. Questions? Okay. So what you're, what you would be voting on is basically this page, the, the major categories, because we will, like the sections within them sometimes are influx and stuff. So the, this is what the auditor basically looks at. So these are the categories that, if there's anything wildly different, I'd bring it to you. But if we go over any of these category expenditures, then we have to look at doing a budget and the board has to approve that expenditure.
So then we are making a motion to approve the 2024 budget as well as the 2024 pay scale.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. Do a roll call vote just to be. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Zizinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right, budget passes. Proceed. Thank you.
2024 foundation meeting schedule, this is the one I'm, where we normally divide this up so that all of the trustees can attend the foundation meetings. I would actually like to propose that we move this to the December meeting.
Sure.
So that all five of us can be here and it'll allow all of us to look at our calendars and hopefully come in and, because we take them now and then if Echo and Janice aren't able to do the open ones, then we are starting over anyway. So I say we table this until next month.
And if I could just say, so it's a, it's a permanent non-voting seat. You're not required to have a trustee at every meeting, but you are allowed to have. So the way that the foundation's bylaws are written, both the library staff, so the executive director or their designee, and, and the trustees are allowed to have a kind of a permanent non-voting seat, just so that they can see what's going on. So if for some reason you can't cover all the meetings, that's fine. It's more of something you can do, but don't have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have arrived at the public comment section of the evening. As per the board's updated public comment policy, as a general rule, the board will not respect the public comments at the time they are made. The board may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during normal business hours. And I once again will reiterate, any disruption will not be tolerated. There are 10 speakers, 30 minutes, three minutes apiece math, right? So please be respectful of that. The clock doesn't stop between speakers, which is why I try to quickly move through to the next speaker as people are finishing. And so please keep those disruptions quiet and so that we can get through all the speakers. I do not want to have to ever cut anybody off, so. All right, starting from the top, Elizabeth Dudas Buesker.
I'll watch the timer because I don't want to go wrong.
Yeah? I'm gonna start you in just a second.
Oh, okay.
I always have to make it full screen, takes a minute.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, all four of you, for what you have done and the friends in the library. I went on the website recently to see some of the excellent responses that Renee has given to book challenges. And I want to start with one in particular, the book, "And Tango Makes Three." Mostly I'm a cat person, but I hail from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I love hockey, therefore I love penguins. I keep my house at 68 degrees year-round and my husband calls me as a penguin. My bonus daughter likes to come to my house because, in that quote, it's freezing. She and I looked at this book once and she said, oh, look, it's a book about you. We looked at the book and it does in fact tell the story of Tango, a little baby who starts in an egg, being raised by two male penguins. There's no discussion of sex, just two penguins who work together for the best of the baby penguin who was in that egg from somewhere. It's a true story and I can't help but think, imagine what our world would be like, what our community would be like if it didn't matter who was doing the job, but that all of our children had the guidance they needed for a good start in life. My stepdaughter has a dad, a mom, and she, a bonus mom, and she's had two stepfathers who are now gone. It's not exactly traditional. I've read people's challenges to this book because it forces some quote ideological agenda. And this is repeated. The American Library Association, the MLA, YALSA, and other organizations are accused of promoting a queer agenda. The radical woke agenda of believing that together communities build better lives for their children. This library has been accused of the same. So who is making these accusations? People who want books removed, sure. National organizations and representative voices such as Safe Library Guide and the World Library Association, who by the way, has a team member on this very board, and then of course seemingly the entire state of Florida. Assertively antithetical to the ALA, which was established in 1876, the World Library Association wants to eliminate and replace the ALA. So a library board member right now wants to eliminate the American Library Association standards. These standards came long before decades, literally centuries, at the time of the start of our democracy. I know we have state representatives who say that we do not live in a democracy, but we do. It's a democratic republic, it's a, it's a democracy, which means that, I hope, you will pay attention to the next couple of speakers, who are going to talk to you about the number of voices being represented by some of the messages that you are receiving. I just want you to ask yourself one question. The speakers who bring up representation for you, the people who want all education allowed by law and encourage community building, are they the ones with the radical agenda? Or is it the ones who want to limit those educational opportunities? Thank you.
Alicia? Sorry, I can't read the last name, but I know you, I know who you are.
Good evening, thank you. I've been coming to the library board meetings for the last several months, mostly. mostly as an observer, to hear the concerns of those who want to restrict access to books. Recently, I did a freedom of information request to our library regarding several points I'd like to discuss. I'm going to provide you with a copy of that. In 2020, no books were challenged. In 2021, three books were challenged. In 2022, 15 books were challenged. And as of the date of my request, in 2023, 23 books were challenged. Of the 2022, 23 challenges, which totaled 39, there were two challenges for the same book. Only 12 patrons made these challenges. The library has 20,766 active cardholders. Therefore, out of just the active patrons, only 0.058% of users have challenged a book in 2022, 2023. I have also included today an excellent response from the library director from another library who has been under attack for months. He points out several important messages about the importance of public libraries to the community. So please read this, since one of your own is willing to take down the library to get her own way. But I'd specifically like to address and read his final paragraph, because it parrots the same language I have heard here time and time again. Quote, "A common refrain is that the materials in question don't reflect the values of the residents of St. Charles County. Yet cumulatively, they have checked out hundreds of, been checked out hundreds of times by those very residents. Do they not count as true St. Charles County residents? Are their tax dollars somehow worth less? The answer, of course, is obvious. If you're approaching it from an apolitical, unbiased point of view, as we always do. And I will add, as you should do as trustees of the library." Thank you.
Scott Woosley?
I'm Scott Woosley, and I'm a member of U-Turn and Education. I'd like to tell you about one of the positive experiences that we've had with our efforts of supporting direct read and expert librarianship. So a little backstory first. Last June, the NIXA School Board voted to retain Mouse in their high school library. The challenge to the book came from an administrator rather than from a parent and stemmed from confusion over the interpretation of SB 775 and its subsequent laws. This whole situation of Mouse being reconsidered drew negative national attention to the district and to our community. And we were all greatly relieved when the book was retained. Now, a couple of days before that, though, we were contacted by a professor who had made national news over banning of Mouse, but for a positive reason. Doctors Scott Denham and Barbara Mann had taught a virtual class to students in the Tennessee School District when Mouse was removed from the eighth grade curriculum there in January 2022. I served as the main point of contact with Scott and Barbara and coordinated their generous offer of a free class at NIXA with the developments in our area and possible venues for providing a class custom tailored to the needs of this community. What we wound up with was the Mouse Course, which was held right here in this room all five Tuesday nights in October. The start of that class coincided with banned books week, and in development I did not see coming, the attack on Israel occurred before we even held our second class session. Dr. Denham's PhD is from Harvard, and he is the Chair of German Studies at Davidson College. Dr. Mann's PhD is from Berkeley. She's a professor of Hebrew language and literature at Case Western. She also taught at the Jewish Theological Seminary and at Princeton. They're capable of teaching at length about mass at any conceivable level. What we hit on was something akin to upper division undergrad at a top-tier university, but without tests. The course was fascinating and unlike anything else I've ever experienced in NIXA. We learned a lot about Mouse, also about how to read a graphic novel in general. The various layers of messages and stories occurring on multiple levels simultaneously in both the texts and the meta-texts were absolutely fascinating. And beyond my ability to fully understand what I had read the book previously, there's a darn good reason why Mouse is the only graphic novel ever to win a Pulitzer. Now, besides the Zoom attendees, I counted 28 people in person at the first class, and the feedback was extremely positive. Now, if, if the board can encourage CCL to offer some other literary academic experiences comparable to what the Mouse Course proved to be, I'd appreciate it, and I think you'll find an audience.
Thank you. David Rice?
I apologize, I'm clumsy. Board members, I'm sharing a small sample of the multitude of offensive material found in the book, Flamer. Community members have requested it to be reconsidered and remains on the shelf. Will you use your authority to remove it before I start tonight? Let me remind you of your strategic plan for 2023 through 2025. Build collections to reflect the community. Does a book about a teenage boy with graphic sexual nudity and sexual violence reflect community standards? Flamer is about a teenage boy scout who's 13 to 14. It's meant to attract young readers who have read The Diary of a Wimpy Kid. This book is at NIXA in the YA section as a graphic novel. This book is brightly colored with a boy backlit by a fire. It's meant to attract children to pick it up. It's meant to elicit sexual responses from children. Examples, page 14. Hey Navarro, suck any good dicks lately. Page 77. I don't want you homos looking at my ass. Page 86. Father Danilo said I should consider the priesthood, but I want to have sex. Someday when I'm married, I want to know what it feels like. I wonder if priests jerk off. Page 121. My dick gets so hard thinking about her sometimes that I think it's going to rip right through my jeans. Page 131. We're each busting and loading into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. Page 132. I came across a videotape hidden behind the TV. I could see everything. People are doing things I didn't know were even possible or allowed. Why is there so much hair? Those dicks are so big. Page 133. I started watching my dad's porn a lot while I was naked. And eventually, I stumbled upon a surprise sensation. It felt good, but then I felt really guilty about it. I knew watching porn had to be a sin. Now here I am in this tent full of people jerking off. Page 207. You're the faggot, you're the fudge-packing, fairy-cock-sucking, queer pansy faggot. Profanity count. Ass 14. Bitch 3. Cock 2. Dick 5. Faggot fag 14. Fuck 14. Piss 1. Prick 1. Queer 2. Shit 13. Knowing what you know now, will you remove this book from your collection? This book actually admits how harmful porn is to the development of children. Do you not see how this book is child porn? As someone who was sexually abused by older children, reading this book was traumatizing. Many of you are traumatized by me reading it. I'm an adult who has, has gone through counseling and healing. How is a sexually abused child supposed to deal with this abid trauma? Who is in charge here in Christian County? Would you rather have children be sexually traumatized and upset the American Library Association? The ALA is a Marxist organization, has a Marxist president. Emily Trabinski said she wants to re-center children's libraries on notions of queerness and prevent what she describes as angry white mob parents from trying to block the efforts. Queer theory, which is Marxist, was invented by pedophiles. Think about that. Making libraries queer is more important than anything else. Emily will eagerly sexually traumatize children to queer libraries. Do you share her views? Are you Marxist? Why won't you remove this book? From this vantage point, I can't tell if it's because you're perverts or cowards.
Dani Coburn?
Ford, thank you for your time. I want to, first, I've been attending for several months now, and I'm a little bit shocked. But let me just get to what I was going to talk about. Christian County population in 2021 is 91,499 people. Attendance at the library board meetings is at tops 100. At tops. That is 0.0011% of Christian County attending these meetings. Many of the attendees are the same every month. Not representative of Christian County. No, they are not. Missouri is number three on the book banning list nationwide publicly. Since the history of time, those who ban, restrict, censor, remove books have never been on the right side of history. Never. School banning comments, during our school banning issues, comments included, children should go to the public library to check out these books. Well, here we are, banning books in the public library. And a concerted effort by a few to destroy the current library board and institute their own ideal of what should be in the library, not based on research, the law, science, or any logical argument, only fear and emotion. There are a large majority of voters, not 71%, who oppose efforts to have books removed from the local public libraries, including a majority of Democrats, 75%, independents, 58%, and Republicans, 70%. Most voters and parents hold librarians in high regard, have confidence in their local libraries to make good decisions about what books to include in their collection, and agree that libraries in their communities do a good job offering books that represent a variety of viewpoints. Voters love librarians, and rank librarians as twice as favorable as their governors, Democratic Party, the GOP, Donald Trump, and Joe Biden. 95% of Democrats, 80% of independents, and 53% of Republicans are against book bans and will consider book bans when voting. The minority rule, just 8% of voters believe there are two, there are many books that are inappropriate and should be banned. 8%. 31% of Republicans think there is absolutely no time when a book should be banned. Minority rule, only 18% of voters support book banning on issues of race and CRT. More than 90% of voters are against book banning and the hundreds of classic novels and children's books that are extremist groups have targeted for banning. Minority rule, only 1/3 of voters support bans on books that discuss sexuality. 75% of voters will consider book banning when voting in November. More than 50% of voters are concerned about legislation being created to regulate Americans' access to books. Democrats, independents, and Republicans oppose book bans. When it comes to state lawmakers removing certain books from schools, such bans have the support of just 5% of Democrats, 16% of independents, 35% of Republicans. 52% of Republicans oppose such efforts. Cambridge Dictionary banning is an official order that prevents something. Merriam-Webster is prohibited, especially by legal means. And I also want to add, as a therapist, I think it is offensive for someone to be reading out loud offensive material to, in a public.
Elena King?
I would like to ask why you refuse to respond to community concerns that have been brought to you for a year now. Last month, I brought you research to show how the obscene content in the children's and young adult sections does not reflect our community and is purchased and retained against the wishes of the very taxpayers who pay the bills. The month prior, I showed you that the library has sexual nudity and books tagged as sex instruction for children that lie in wait for an unassuming preschooler to pick it up in the children's section, changing them forever, losing their innocence. Am I talking to a wall? Do you guys care? If not, I'll tell you again that you should resign. And how are we supposed to know how the board intends to address or not address our concerns when you don't respond? The board policy states, the board may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion. So I guess I should assume that with the exception of two solution-oriented board members, that your own discretion guides you to ignore us. That's a shame. I'm requesting this evening that the board designate an official response time during the old business portion of every meeting to respond to our comments, concerns, and questions. Please prove me wrong and show that you are listening. That brings me to my second point. Citizens are frustrated that you not only ignore our concerns, but that you've not sought after a compromise. These meetings are nothing more than a giant rubber stamp to the wishes of our executive director's agenda. Please act as an independent board who represents the taxpayers. There are examples in public libraries that we can look at to see that compromise can be found. At St. Tammany Parish Public Library in Louisiana, a five-tiered library card system has empowered their citizens to choose from unrestricted access all the way to restricted juvenile cards limited to children's material only. At Idaho Falls Public Library, a two-tiered library card system has again given families the choice for their children between unrestricted access or restricted to the children's material. At the Patmos Public Library in Michigan, the board recently reached a compromise to attach descriptive labels to over 90,000 books after the public voted to defund their library through two rounds of public votes. After all, isn't more information better? At Saline County Public Library in Arkansas, the library board recently fired their executive director for refusing to relocate age-inappropriate books from the children's section into the adult section. I could go on, and we have attempted to follow policy to challenge books, only to be met with ALA censorship toolkit talking points, suggesting that you respond to the concern public by referencing professional magazines and journals. In other words, you've sought a confirmation bias instead of public input, and you claim an expertise. I'm not advocating, advocating to use another library as a blueprint, but rather show you that it is possible to compromise, and it's past time for you to start addressing our concerns.
Reggie? Reggie Mitchell? No response. Huh? Point of order, no response from the audience?
Was that something?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to speak tonight on the power of suggestion through seeing and hearing. Proverbs 4:23 tells us to guard our heart with all diligence.
That's your problem.
For out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. Jesus said to Matthew 4:24, he said, "Take heed what you hear, or pay attention to what you hear, and be careful what it is you hear." There was two ladies the last few meetings that had made the comment that what children heard or read wasn't really that important. But the eyes and the ears are the gateway to the mind. It's the information center where choices, whether good or bad, are made. We're all here tonight because we either heard or read that there was going to be a meeting, and then we made a choice of whether or not we would come. Good or bad knowledge entertained will eventually find its way to the heart. Proverbs 23 and 7 says, "As a man thinketh in his heart, so is he." I'd watched some videos on interviews of some serial killers. James Dobson, a focus on the family, had interviewed Ted Bundy, who in the 70s raped and murdered 30 women. When asked what started it all, he said, "It was a magazine that I found in an alley at the age of 12. It became like a hook in my brain. When reading and looking at it no longer satisfied, he started doing what he had read and seen. He said, "In the 10 years I've been in prison here," said, "I've met many men like me, that what they had seen, read, and heard was the start of their problem." Ted Koppel interviewed Jeffrey Donkers, who in 1978, '91, killed and dismembered 17 males and ate part of their body. He told Ted, he said, "I kept making trips to the bookstores." He was murdered himself in prison in 1994. John Wayne Gacy, who was involved in politics, worked also as a clown in birthday parties. He was convicted of killing 33 people. And when he was finally caught, they found 30 bodies buried under his house and in his backyard. He was executed in 1994. Jack the Ripper, who was never caught. Harold Shipman, known as Doctor Death, in 1972 and '98, was convicted of murdering 250 people who committed suicide while he was in prison. There was many others, but one thing they had in common, it all started with what they seen, what they heard, and what they read. So don't try to tell us that these pornographic books aren't dangerous to children.
Thank you. Lucas Underwood?
Is what has formed their life. So let's go free of any more of these monsters.
Please sit down, or you're going to have to leave. Thank you. Lucas Underwood?
Heading that way. Can I give this to you?
Thank you so much.
Hello, members of the board. I hope you're all doing well tonight. I'm here today because I wanted to talk about a book that's been the target of much recent controversy. The book is called It's Perfectly Normal, and it was written to inform pre-adolescent children about puberty, relationships, and sexual health. It's perfectly normal has received much praise for its credible information regarding sexual health, as well as the normalization of the, quite frankly, freakish and monstrous things that happen to us all when we go through puberty. Unfortunately, it has also been one of the most challenged books in the past two decades, primarily to the directness of its imagery regarding sex. Many claim that this book is much too graphic for its target audience and should be, at the very minimum, moved to a higher age range for its availability. This sounds like a fair This sounds like a fair criticism on its face. However, a story came out from the Philadelphia Inquirer earlier this year as to why this book is important and should be available for its current age range. A mother of a 10-year-old girl, who had requested to remain anonymous, visited their local library, and the child found It's Perfectly Normal on the shelf. After finishing the book, the girl showed her mother a section of chapter six, which talks about sexual abuse, and told her, "This is me." The girl's own father was abusing her. Soon after, the father was convicted and sentenced. The abuse cannot be undone, but he is now locked away, and the girl can get help she needs to heal from the trauma inflicted upon her. If It's Perfectly Normal wasn't available for her age range, or worse, banned from libraries and bookstore shelves, who knows how much longer the abuse would have gone on? Whenever people call for books like this to be banned, they often make the claim that the children are too young to see things like this. A child, however, is never too young to be targeted by an abuser. It is our duty as citizens to understand and allow educational material to be readily available to all who may need it. We do not protect our most vulnerable from harm by isolating them and keeping them ignorant of the world and its evils. We protect them by preparing them and ensuring they can recognize harmful behaviors from those who would take advantage of them. I've been made aware that this book is not currently available in Christian County's library system, so I will be filling out a suggested titles purchase form, and I hope others who are here tonight will do the same. Thank you for your time, members of the board.
Kevin Bright?
Oh, thank you.
Now, I'm not certain when it started, but there's a concerning lack of communication between the majority of this library board and the citizens of Christian County. I realize I do not represent everyone in the county, but this is my community. I pay taxes here, and I do know a good number of the citizens. Outside of a few members of this board and very few individuals that have attended these meetings, I have not found anyone that speaks in defense of the age-inappropriate material that's being made accessible to our children and youth. To be very blunt, the reaction to this material has been that it is absolutely unacceptable. This material goes against the very nature of anything good, natural, traditional, or positive. Quite the opposite, this material causes confusion, degrades the moral fiber, and reduces individuals into objects and erodes their value. This material tells children that there's something wrong with them, and it deceives them. I will identify myself to you as anything but perfect. I have faults, I have flaws, and I've made many mistakes. However, I also have a Savior and a book that gives me instructions to help me navigate my way through this world. I also look forward to the future, and I'm compelled to provide a future for our children. History, logic, and basic common sense expose the core of this material to be destructive and evil. According to the Word of God, our children are a gift from God. Our children are frail and need cared for. Our children are created in the image of God. We absolutely should not cause harm to our children. Matthew 18:1-5. "At that time the disciples came to Jesus and said, 'Who then is greatest in the kingdom of heaven?'" "And he called a child to himself and set him among them, and said, 'Truly I say to you, unless you change and become like children, you will not enter the kingdom of heaven.' So whoever will humble himself like this child, he is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven; and whoever receives one such child in my name receives me; but whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it is better for him that a heavy millstone be hung around his neck, and that he be drowned in the depths of the sea.'" This is how our Creator, Almighty God, feels about our children. Due to the influence of a few individuals, there has been an introduction material placed in our public libraries that's absolutely unacceptable for our children. If any of you think this material is not evil and destructive, I recommend you resign and leave. If you're someone being forced to expose our children to this evil, we will join and help you find a way to put an end to that influence. Christ is the chief cornerstone and foundation of this community, and this will be stopped. That process has begun, and we will see it through.
Thank you. Alec Harrison?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had a lot of passion in here tonight, and I can imagine how you guys feel, but I've only been here a few months, and I remember the first meeting, and it's just burned in me ever since that they showed some explicit material, and that's what brought me here. I'm a concerned grandpa of five grandgirls and one grandson. And because the man of God had passed out some things and told the truth, people would come very angry, and there was a confrontation, and the law hadn't invited that guy outside. But I thought, what if somebody beat him up? You know, some of you'd say bravo, and some not. But what if my little grandkids were sitting in here, and somebody began to hurt them? I've heard a lot about statistics, a lot of people ain't showing, people don't want to get involved. And no matter what they would do to my grandchildren here, there would be a few people out of this whole building that would probably get involved, wouldn't it? Most would stand, and all others would run and leave, but very few would stand and fight for somebody else's children. And I thought about that tonight, and I thought, if somebody come in and began to beat one of them up, and nobody done something, it would go on the news as a whole other story. But if the law enforcement would come and do it, we'd say they're a hero or something like that. And they're just doing their job. So I wonder, why is it so difficult for people who want to protect children? I mean, I just can't understand why anybody wouldn't want to protect them. Because if you don't protect them, then something so innocent as a sleepover can become a very dangerous thing. You know, I've never talked about this ever in public, but I was terribly abused whenever I was a kid, because somebody else had explicit material, just like what the man of God was reading about. Thank God I wasn't murdered. And I got to thinking about all the things, and so I suffered years of drug abuse. I didn't want to be a homosexual. I'd been ripped wide open. Alls I wanted to do at Little League that day, I see my mom and dad, and I wanted to run up and tell them what happened to me, but I couldn't because the shame and the guilt was so bad. And I lived with it for years as a drug addict and alcoholic, till Jesus Christ set me free. That's the only way I could get free of all that, and He set me free. So I wonder why nobody would want to stand up and protect these children? I know it's unpopular sometimes to make a stand. But I know that without you making a stand, we're all going to be accountable, no matter we think we're above accountability, and you're answering. I just pray to God that these new presidents have some moral values on this, and anybody can live any lifestyle they want to. I mean, we're all answering for the way we live. But I'm saying something about we've got to protect children, don't we? I mean, that right there is just the morality right there, is to protect those who cannot protect themselves, correct? So I'm just saying, think about that tonight, because whatever blood is on hands through drug abuse and OD and suicide, you know, somebody's got to answer for that. And so if we're not doing, the people shouldn't be here tonight, there ought to be riots in the streets over little children being hurt this bad over these things. And if you've never been through that, it'd be really hard to understand really just how dangerous this material is.
Thank you.